Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to session this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo. Councilmember Kareshi. Councilmember Siemens.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Great. Tonight is our first budget work session. We will be discussing capital projects. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you. I'm wearing green this evening because it's capital projects and almost all of our capital projects are green things in one form or another. And here's a picture of our Grant Avenue Bio Retention area. Tonight, I'll go over the council priorities as they pertain to the capital budget. The Stormwater Management Fund, the Speed Camera Fund, the Special Revenue Funds, the items of the General Fund. I'll focus on three big projects: the Flower Avenue Green Street, Ethan Allen Gateway Project, and the Library Project. And then we'll talk tonight about bonding some and finish up just with reminder of the budget schedule. The council priorities, we've got the items that were in my first presentation, but those that are in orange are ones that I think are closely associated with the council priorities: for the Livable Community for All, proceeding with plans to renovate and expand the library, completion of Sligo Mill Overlook Park, but I must say that that may actually almost be done before we hit the new fiscal year. Keep my fingers crossed on that. And the Ethan Allen Gateway and Flower Avenue Green Street projects. We don't have any capital projects under the Fiscally Sustainable Government section, but a whole lot of this affects our fiscal base, so we certainly will be referring to it this evening. In terms of environmentally sustainable government, I think kind of the biggest part of the budget that affects this is the Stormwater Management Program. And we do have some very important projects related to that. And I also looked under the racial equity criteria that we've begun looking at, and renovation expansion of the Tacoma Park Library, the Flower Avenue Green Street, and the Ethan Allen Gateway all fit into benefiting people of color in our community. Depending on how you spend the about $20,000 that's in the legislative budget, some of that could go to something that's a capital project, such as an aquatics center. I'd like to start with the Stormwater Management Fund. And we have some major projects for the Stormwater Management Fund: the Tacoma Branch Stream Restoration Design for $100,000. This is a project that we have been trying to get underway for a long time and trying to get grant money for. It has not been approved for grant money for several years. We need to do the project. It means a lot to our base for our requirements under the Clean Water Act, so it's time to bite down and actually spend the money to do the project. We have some Bio Retention projects. We have a truck scale. And we have parts of other projects, such as the Flower Avenue Green Street Bio Retention, which is a large portion of the project. The city's goal is to provide stormwater treatment for runoff from 20% of existing impervious area not currently provided treatment, and this helps meet the Chesapeake Bay Cleanup Program and the Clean Water Act. The Tacoma Branch Stream Restoration Design is the $100,000. This is the area kind of back behind Poplar Mill, Sligo Mill. And it's a little hard to see the map on the left, but basically, most of the Tacoma Branches in Prince George's County. Nevertheless, there's about 700 feet of the stream in Tacoma Park, and it has a number of serious problems. The bank, Stream Bank, fails, erodes, deposits a large amount of sediment in the stream bed, and the goal is to restore the Tacoma Branch to its natural conditions. This will provide a significant amount of equivalent impervious area reduction, and there's an acronym for all that I'm not going into, I'm learning, but it's approximately seven acres, and it's very important for our calculations with the state. We've got projects at Devonshire and Glazewood, two or more Bio Retention facilities at that intersection, at Grant and Holly, one at the northeast corner of the intersection, and on Tulip Avenue, it's the completion of the Stormwater System Maintenance Project, which installs about 300 linear feet of pipe. Then we go to the Speed Camera Fund. I'll go back through some of these in a little bit. Not a lot in the capital budget out of the Speed Camera Fund, field radio equipment, mobile computers, and small amount of police office renovation work. In the Special Revenue Funds, we have auditorium and city TV facilities and equipment. We have some, a big project for a sidewalk, Leacon Avenue sidewalk, has Safe Routes to Schools money of $578,000. We looked at how should we try to get money for sidewalks? And after discussions with the state, it made sense to focus their money on one project and get that project paid for with Safe Routes to Schools because the approval process for Safe Routes to Schools money through S.H.A. is tedious. So we're focusing it on one project, so we're not slowing down a number of having to go through this with a number of projects. We can just focus on one. Other money goes to other sidewalks. We also have money for the Ethan Allen Gateway, including the $1.2 million of the federal money for the Transportation Alternatives Program and $66,000 from the Maryland Bike Ways Program. On Flower Avenue Green Street, we have federal TAP money, Montgomery County money, federal CDBG funds, and a contribution from WSSC. Sligo Mill Overlook Park is funded largely by program Open Space, which is state funding. I'd like to go to where some of the kind of big items are in a long list, and that is the General Fund and the Equipment Replacement Reserve. And this is always a fun spreadsheet to look at, and I'm not going to bore you with that. But what this is, is a long list that specifies vehicles and large pieces of equipment that the city expects to replace. Funds are set aside each year so that we can afford to replace the items at the end of their expected lives. And many of you know this, but for those who are watching, and a good example is if you've got a $100,000 dump truck and it's expected to last 10 years, each year, we contribute $10,000 to the E.R.R. so that we have the monies available when it's time to purchase the new dump truck. Each year, we remove items that were on the program. We deduct those amounts. We look through and see, do we really, are these the right kind of expected lifetimes for the various pieces of equipment? What's the expected future cost? And we make adjustments. Currently, the spreadsheet includes 58 items with expected lives going from five to 30 years. There's a couple purchase prices in the $5,000 range, but it can go all the way up to, in our one case, $355,000. The Equipment Replacement Reserve Fund is expected to have a balance of $3.6 million at the end of this year. I have budgeted, in my proposed budget, $800,000 contribution. We expect expenditures from FY '18 of about $382,000, and that would leave the balance at the end of FY '18 around $4 million. Items that are in the CIP chart, and you've got that in the back of your budget book, include five police vehicles, which are four cars and one K-9 vehicle, a backhoe, replacing the tractor and backhoe attachment on the list, fuel dispensing software and equipment for Public Works, a variety of Public Works equipment pieces, half of the truck scale costs, the other half comes from the Stormwater Fund, some small recreation equipment, and 27 library workstations of the userful system that we use. And I've got here the expected E.R.R. expenditures for the next five years, and you can see that in FY '19, we go over $1 million. So sometimes it bounces around a lot. I did look through for a 10-year period, kind of looking through what the list shows. If you average over a 10-year period, the average comes to about $655,000 a year. In looking through the list very carefully, I determined that the $800,000 contribution that I proposed is a little high and could come to $700,000. I wouldn't take it lower than that simply because we do have a large expenditure in FY '19, and I'm not sure how things are going to go. One of our other reserves is the Facilities Maintenance Reserve, and this is a less defined fund, but it helps replace items that aren't really equipment in our facilities. I'm proposing to add $300,000 to the reserve and spend, I'm not sure exactly the final amount that I've got on there, but we have a number of different kinds of smaller items that would be spent in FY '18 from the Facilities Maintenance Reserve. Half of the treating the concrete walkway in the parking lot, the $80,000, we're approving half this year, which will happen very soon, and then half in FY '18. There's some HVAC units. There's some bathroom retrofits. There's some renovation of some office space. And that's, this is an area of where I think we still need to do some definitions of exactly how we spend it. We know pretty much what fits in it, but it's not been defined and kind of approved by council in that way. And that'd be part of the whole discussion of our financial policies. Then we have just general fund capital items, and we have ongoing items. We try to every year spend $500,000 on street rehabilitation, $500,000 on ADA sidewalk retrofit, and $500,000 on new sidewalks. This year, we're only putting in $300,000 for street rehabilitation because we're putting in so much money on both Ethan Allen and Flower Avenue. So it seems reasonable to keep it to this list. We have a tentative list of streets in the proposed budget. Sometimes this changes if a utility company is out there doing something, but you'll see the list here: Aspen Avenue and Court, Cedar Circle, Columbia, Crescent Place, Devonshire Road, a portion of Elm Avenue, Erie Avenue, Fenton Street, Geneva Avenue, a portion of Grant Avenue, Greenwood, Kentland, Montgomery, Poplar, and Winding Hillway. On the ADA sidewalk retrofit, we're budgeting $500,000. $300,000 is for work that's still to be done in Award One on city streets, and we're devoting $200,000 for ADA sidewalk retrofits along state highways. A good portion of that may be to design work that gives us kind of the agreements from the State Highway Administration that allows us to do work in the future. So we'll have to see how that goes. I'm hoping we can build on our discussion with the State Highway Administrator to keep the design costs to a minimum. In terms of new sidewalk design, which also goes into some traffic calming, we've got projects, design work in 8,000 block of Maple Avenue, Glen Side Avenue Continuation Project, construction on Lincoln, and if approved, Larch Avenue and Maple Avenue. We always have $20,000 in for streetlight upgrades. These are for, gee, we see an area where that it needs new lighting or something like that. It's not part of our LED transition project. It's simply a kind of, as we see a need for a streetlight. And $35,000 for the public art projects that have been well received. For non-ongoing general fund capital expenditures, we have big projects. We have the Flower Avenue Green Street Project. In FY '18, we're expecting about $880,000 of city funds to be contributed to the project because it will be going on into FY '19. Funds of, that there will also be some funds reimbursed by S.H.A. of the almost, about $600,000 that they're contributing to the project. For Ethan Allen Gateway, we would be putting in about $1 million. And then for the library work, some detailed design monies, $150,000, and $3,750,000 for the start of the library project. We also have some projects in Spring Park: a bog bridge, which I still haven't found out what a bog bridge is. I imagine what it is, but I'd like to learn more about that one. And pathways and erosion work for $60,000. We've put in $150,000 under a category called Neighborhood Commercial Center Improvements, and this is for money, some things that we feel may be recommendations of the Economic Development Strategic Plan for, from site-specific locations. So we're not exactly sure what that is, but given the kinds of discussions, we thought that it would be useful to have those funds allocated. Similarly, $75,000 to augment some Tacoma Junction area traffic study work that we may feel is important as the project proceeds. And then continued detailed design work on the work for the police station. On the Ethan Allen Gateway Project, the bids have been received. We've not opened them yet. They will be open on April 24th. So we're, you know, this will be the first time when we start to see what the numbers are that really come back as opposed to what our, the estimators say. Construction is scheduled to start in the summer. The total budget is approximately $2.4 million. Of that, $1.25 million is from the Federal Transportation Alternatives funding, $66,000 from Maryland's Bike Ways Program, and the remainder from the city. And we have a picture that shows kind of the work to be done out there. On the Flower Avenue Green Street Project, again, we'll be contributing about a million bucks here if we do $1.2 million towards this whole project. It leverages $5.1 million from other entities, and that's not including the work that Washington Gas will be doing very shortly. So we have money from WSSC. We have the Federal Transportation Alternatives Program. We have $700,000 from State Highway, $200,000 from Montgomery County, $168,000 from the National Fish and Wildlife Federation Grant, and $77,000 from Community Development Block Grant Funds. Altogether, the amounts that are shown on this are what are put together with, from our designers, our engineers, in coordinating the work. So Washington Gas is going to go in there before the project actually breaks ground on the other work, and it's not included in this, but that's also a contribution and part of the coordination work that's going on. The Flower Avenue Green Street Project gets new sidewalks on the east side, energy-efficient lighting, new bus stops, low-impact stormwater infrastructure, the bumpouts for traffic calming and easier crossings, and it coordinates with Washington Gas, WSSC, property owners, including Washington Adventist University. And we have similar benefits from the Ethan Allen Project. And we have the library renovation and expansion. And I really like this picture. It's just one of the pictures that we used in making a presentation to the Maryland General Assembly that shows who benefits and uses in cramped conditions our library. The estimated cost of the library is about $7.5 million. That includes design costs, construction costs of about $5.5 million, furnishings and equipment, and then we have costs about relocating the books, storage of books, the activities of the programs of the library, and then some money for whatever seems to come up. There may be some things that come up in the parking lot work that happen, that need to be paid for. The funds for the project include $150,000 from the Maryland Bond Bill. Thank you, Councilmember Kovar, for testifying on that. We're proposing to borrow $7 million in a library bond. We are working to see how much of our cable capital funds we can use for the project so it's not coming from kind of taxpayer money. And there are certain elements that might be able to be paid for out of funds in the Facility Maintenance Fund and in the E.R.R. as we get through, going through the various detailed designs. And we have some pictures of that. So one of the biggest issues related to this year's budget is borrowing money. And so we'll talk a little bit about borrowing money. I recommend borrowing $7 million for the library project and $2 million for a transportation bond for the Ethan Allen Gateway and the Flower Avenue Green Street Projects. Borrowing money to pay for an expensive project over an extended period of time is an essential budgeting tool. It's like your house. You're probably not going to just pay it in cash. Bonding also allows those who benefit from the facility or the improvements to help pay the cost of it. We have direction from our charter and the code on borrowing, as well as from state law. In the past, we have borrowed from the Maryland Local Government Loan Program and from banks. When we had the retreat, on the priority retreat with the council, there were a number of things talked about about bonding. There was kind of a preference to borrow larger amounts, and in talking with individual council members, I heard a preference for longer bonding terms. So when we were looking at a library bond of $7 million, we reviewed terms for 20, 25, and 30 years. And I've passed out to you, Ms. Chung passed out, kind of the different schedules that we received from the Maryland Loan Infrastructure Program. We recommend the term of 30 years for the project to limit the cost of annual debt service for all outstanding debt obligations. We recommend using the Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Program for two reasons. It's been a good program, and it's not a bank, and people have concerns about some of the banks, so we thought it was best to just stick with our Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Program. In addition to the $7 million principal amount, a 30-year bond brings with it $4.7 million in interest, $175,000 cost of issuance, and $42,000 in fees and insurance. A shorter-term bond would incur less in interest, but not in these other costs. Those other costs are associated with the $7 million amount. On the transportation bond, we reviewed terms of five, 10, and 15 years. We recommend the term of 15 years for the project. Again, it limits the cost of annual debt service, but because the total amount of $2 million is relatively small, we didn't want to look longer than 15 years. When you start looking at that, you just, you just feel like you want to pay it off with the amount that's left, and so I recommend not going over 15 years. Again, I recommend using the Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Program. In addition to the $2 million principal, the 15-year bond brings with it $500,000 in interest, $50,000 cost of issuance, and $7,500 in fees and insurance. Again, a shorter-term bond would have less interest, but the costs of issuance are the So we went through this last year about what are the, kind of the criteria for bonding, both from our council, from our charter, and from general standards and practice of borrowing money for governments. So one thing is, any indebtedness greater than 5% of revenue needs a public hearing. And since 5% of revenue would be 1.6 million, and we're talking about borrowing 9 million, we would need a public hearing. But we would do a public hearing anyway, so there's that. One of the recommendations is to strive to maintain net tax-supported debt at a level not to exceed 1% of the assessed value. In this case, we're good because the assessed value would be of the city overall, 1% of that would be 22.4 million, because it's $2.2 billion. And what we're looking at is a total amount of debt of $16.4 million. The next criteria is strive to maintain annual net tax-supported debt service costs less than 15% of expenditure budgets of the General Fund and the Special Revenue Fund. The 15% amount is 5.7 million, and we're talking $900,000 in debt service payment. And strive to maintain average indebtedness at or below 20 years. And in this case, when you add up the various terms for the various bonds that we have already in existence, and these two new ones, the average would be 11.4 years. I really appreciate Ms. Chung made lots of different spreadsheets so that we could figure out what makes sense. And this one obviously is relatively large, but it has a couple things that I want to bring to your attention. This is a compilation of all of the different debts that we have and are proposing, and the tall orange lines is the sum amount of that debt service. And so in the first few years, we've got the, excuse me, the Public Works Bond, the Community Center 2015 Bond, the transportation bond that we're proposing, the library bond that we're proposing. One thing that you'll notice is that in 2022, we have a payment, a one-time payment of $150,000 for the community legacy loan that came a number of years ago. We are trying to find some way out of this, sort of pay it in a different way. Nevertheless, when you look through our debt service pages, this is always a mention on there. So when you look at how the numbers go on this, if you take a 30-year library bond as the assumption, and a 15-year transportation bond, you'll see for the first three years, we're talking about somewhere in the range of $900,000 a year for debt service. It drops down to the $744,000 in 2021. It bumps up for the extra $150,000 after that, but then it steps down. If we are looking at an opportunity in the future to take out another bond, whether it's something to do with the Police Department renovation, or it has to do, people have talked about the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center or some other things, the amount of indebtedness does go down significantly starting in 2021, and we have some flexibility to work with that. We ran just kind of the totals. If we adjusted the library bond for a 25-year bond and a 20-year bond and compared it to the 30-year bond, you see some of the differences. So the, the blue line, the blue vertical lines are if you have a 20-year bond for the library. Red is the 25-year, and green is the 30-year bond. And what it means is that for the first few years, we're really close to $1 million of indebtedness. And, you know, it takes a while for it to go down. There's different lengths of these times, and we appreciate that. But I will say that we started getting nervous when we saw approaching the $1 million amount. That's a lot of our, that's a lot of our revenue. And we are looking at years where we're not sure, we're not sure what kind of revenue we might have. I tried a couple different things, thinking about, well, what's the impact on the tax rate of these different bond terms? And if the term of the bond for the library were shortened, we would have to pay more for bond service. And so I looked and see, to see, well, what would be the impact on a single-family homeowner under different categories? And actually, I passed out to you, and I'll post later, kind of a spreadsheet that looks at a variety of different schemes for raising the property tax rate to do other, to get, to meet other goals. For the library bond term, if we didn't use a 30-year term, but instead, we used a 25-year term, and everything else stayed the same, instead of a tax rate, a proposed tax rate of 56 cents, it would go to 56.15. And changing from a 30-year term to a 20-year term would raise the 56-cent tax rate to 56.39 cents. What that means for a person who's got, say, a $300,000 house now, the, an average 6% increase in the assessable base amount would bring that price to $318,000. At a 56-cent proposed real property tax rate, the family would pay $1,780.80 in taxes for Tacoma Park. If you had a 25-year bond instead of a 30-year bond, they'd pay five bucks more. If it were a 20-year bond, they'd pay 13 bucks more. It goes up as you get a more expensive home. So the, the point on this, I think, is that it may not make a whole lot of difference to a taxpayer. It may make more difference to us in total. It may make more difference to us in total about the funds that we have as a city to do the various kinds of things that we want to do. So I tried to experiment to see, you know, what, to what extent does a change in the tax rate seem palatable or not palatable? My gut feeling is that the tax rate change might be palatable, but the things that we would have to give up elsewhere that may have to do with New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center or some of these other things might not be what we want to do. On the sheet that I passed out, I also did some work on the stormwater fee, what would happen if, instead of increasing the stormwater fee from $55 to $92, we instead paid that out of the general fund, which wouldn't be an equitable thing to do, because then the nonprofits in the community wouldn't be paying anything extra. But again, it doesn't raise it very much. And I tried it also with half of it going to the general fund, and then half of it increased. All of these things are things that you can consider as you're trying to figure out what makes sense for reconciliation, what makes sense for your constituents. What it came down to me was that it might be the best thing to do for tonight, to focus on the actual capital projects and what you want. But as you're going back and thinking about things, this may be a way to help crystallize what the monetary impact might be of some of the various options. If you went from putting the $800,000 in the ERR contribution to a $700,000 contribution, that saves not quite half a cent, it's 44% of a cent. So, you know, there's a possibility that you could go then down from 56 to like 55, 55, 6. So there's things that you can play around with as you go forward, but I'd really rather, this evening, focus on, are you on board with all of the capital projects that are on the list? Do you have questions about them? And happy to go through those various things. As we look at the budget schedule, tonight's the Budget Works Session on Capital Programs. Next Monday, we'll talk about kind of operating budget items related to the council priorities. And then we go through the, kind of, everything that we didn't cover, non-departmental workers' compensation, some of the independent, individual departments, and reconciliation. So that's my formal presentation. I hope that you've had a chance to look through some of the items in the capital budget. The easiest thing to do sometimes is to just take that section of the budget and look through the spreadsheets. And I think I'll ask right now if you have some questions, and we do have representatives of departments to answer some of the questions for you this evening.
Great. Any questions? I think, well, while I'm waiting for my colleagues to ask a question, I wanted to go back to the facility's maintenance reserve. I was just looking at that. I added up the numbers quickly to what you have here, and they add up to, I think it's 224 if I did the math right.
Yeah, that's about right, yeah.
So I didn't know if also, I know that some of these may be estimates.
That's correct.
If there may be other places here that we may be able to budget a little less.
The, there's a couple of things that I think are pretty close, and none of these are big-ticket items, really. The parking lot cost, I think, is pretty set, because we went into the contract for this year, and then we have the rest for next year. You know, I think renovating the HR, HCD, IT office area is an estimate. And again, that's an area where we can get some cable monies to pay for some of it, because anytime you start, especially dealing with the IT and the cable TV area of the building, we take advantage of that.
Okay. Oh, because that might be a place, maybe, if we could cut like 50 or 75,000.
I'm not sure about that. We try to be accurate on these estimates, but...
All right. And let's see, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I want to drill into the police budget.
I can do the capital part?
Yes.
We've got some speed camera fun.
So why are we, why do they need more, the field radio equipment, mobile computers?
These are the normal things that we just have to keep replacing. Captain?
Yeah, Councilmember Smith.
Oh, wait, you're not on, hold on. Now you're on.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, the reason that we budget yearly for these are regular replacements. The equipment gets worn and broken, and sometimes it's not cost-efficient to replace it. The cost of repair can exceed the cost of what the radio itself is worth. So every year, we put a small amount of money into the budget to purchase new radios as they break along the way. So that's what, that's what the money's for. It's just so we always have operational equipment.
The mobile computers go in the cars.
And the computers are the same. They're the in-car computers that the officers use. And so, especially with the computers, as technology changes, you know, three or four years, something we buy today is just not going to function on the system in three years from now, so we always have monies to constantly have a new supply of computers. It keeps us from finding ourselves in a position where we have to replace 42 computers at one time, which can be extraordinarily costly. The computers themselves are about $2,500 apiece. So that's why we try to budget it and keep them on a regular replacement cycle, so we don't have big purchases to hit us every four or five years.
And so with the field radio equipment and the mobile computers, is there anything in those two categories that is not working at this time?
All of the current equipment is functional, yes.
All right.
Right, so there's just, it's just a regular turnover.
Right.
So I also saw that you guys want new vehicles or replacement of vehicles?
Yes, sir.
How many vehicles? And is this, once again, that you guys are just putting money into the budget to make sure that these vehicles are replaced on a five-year term or...
Just eight years now.
The vehicle replacements are done through a vehicle replacement committee that's headed by a deputy city manager. So representative from the city manager's office, public works department, and a representative of the police department, we meet, and we review all of the information about the vehicles themselves, age, mileage, maintenance costs. Those things are then put into a factoring chart and given a score to determine which vehicles are to be replaced and in what order. So we look at years and mileage first, and then replacement costs. So all the vehicles that are currently listed have exceeded their years and mileage in those cities' replacement plan, and that's why they're recommended for replacement.
And so, do you remember how many vehicles we replaced last year?
Was, I'm going to say it was five last year, maybe six. It varies from year to year. I could look exactly, I think it was six vehicles from last year. It was two cars and five of, oh, seven, I take that back, two cars and five of the utilities. And it's done based on, again, that committee's recommendations of the years and mileage. And cars have a tendency to wear and age differently, depending upon who the operator is and how the car's taken care of. The other thing that's kind of a special consideration is the K-9 vehicles. Because they're operated in a different fashion, they're always on. You know, if we have the dog inside the vehicle, we have to keep the vehicle running at all times. And so the engine hours on the car itself shorten the lifespan of that vehicle. So those cars get a little bit different replacement cycle than what the others. So everything that we do is done through that replacement committee at the recommendation of public works, based on mileage, cost, and age.
And we're happy to share those schedules with you.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
If I could have a follow-up question?
Yes, sir.
Hold on one second.
A follow-up question. How many K-9 are we authorized for now, and how many do we have?
We are currently authorized three K-9s, and that is the number that we have total. We have one dog pending training. I believe Officer Muzati is in training, starting, it started two weeks ago, at Montgomery County, in a K-9 training class. So we have one dog in training and two dogs operational on the road currently.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Cova?
Thank you for the city manager. Thank you for a great presentation. Appreciate it. Just a few questions about the, some of the bonding. So I appreciate the information about the four criteria or guidelines for the bonding, and it looked like on three of the four, you said we were quote-unquote "good," meaning that we were well within the guidelines.
That's right.
So, and that seems pretty clear. I guess on the first one, so I had maybe interpreted that as meaning the annual indebtedness greater than 5%, but what that means is that if the total amount that is owed from all the different bonds we have from different periods, or the new ones we take on...
This is, this is the new ones. This is the thing that basically, the way that the charter's written, as I understand it, if there was a fairly small bond, we wouldn't have to have a public hearing. That, to me, seems ludicrous, but that is something that's permitted. This simply requires us to have a public hearing on it.
Okay. But it doesn't, it's not saying that that's an amount that is in some way...
No, it just, it just flips the switch that says that we're required to have a public hearing.
Okay, okay. So, and with these bonds in general, I don't imagine this happens too often, but if, you know, the famous person from Tacoma Park feels inclined in 10 years and says, hey, I'll kick in a million dollars so you can pay it off early, do we have the ability without some sort of penalty, or if we're flush, more flush at some point?
The way that the program has worked, is it 11 years?
Nine years.
Nine years. We have to have it for nine years. After nine years, then we're able to pay it off. And that's what we did with the community center bond. We refinanced it, which helped.
So is a community center bond, there's still some of that outstanding, though, or is that mostly...
Yes, because we refinanced it so that, because the interest payments were very high compared to what we could get now, so we refinanced it for a better amount.
And how much longer does that one have to go? Is that on there?
That one, let's see, let's see if I can look at here. The community center one goes through 2025.
A couple of other just unrelated questions. So you mentioned, and this was a little bit less certain, maybe the neighborhood commercial center improvements that are potentially connected to the strategic plan? Is that right?
That's right.
Can you give an example of maybe the kinds of things we're talking about?
Maybe Ms. Danes?
Ms. Danes can?
Yeah, it would be, it would be site-specific, probably in the right-of-way improvements.
As the city managers indicated, it could be included in the right-of-way, and it could be in some of the small commercial areas that we see across the community, as well as along New Hampshire Avenue or in the Old Town area. There could also be a possibility, excuse me, of doing some facade easement programs or facade improvement programs. A lot will depend on what comes of that study, but those are some of the things that we're anticipating at this point in time.
So their recommendations would come out in a, sometime, maybe a little bit after the fiscal year starts? And so at that point, if we wanted to do something, unless there was money set aside, depending on what it was, right?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. And the one last question I had was the Tacoma Junction traffic study. So that's separate from whatever, Sarah's coming back up, whatever other traffic studies would have to take place connected to Tacoma Junction?
Come on it. What we've done is we've included funding in the capital budget to look at the traffic, do a traffic analysis that might be a little wider-ranging than what would be required by NDC through the park and planning process. In anticipation of any roadway improvements that might be recommended and supported by the community, we've included in the capital improvement plan for this year. And then if you look out in further years, you'll see that there are additional funds that are earmarked or potentially will be requested for implementing any of the recommendations of that study.
So would that literally be a separate study, or funnelled into whatever would happen through NDC in this case?
It would supplement what NDC is doing.
Okay.
They wouldn't necessarily be done at the same time, because that will be the tricky part in terms of identifying what's going to be happening at that location, because that will have an impact on traffic down, further down the road. We also need to take into consideration changes in activity at the hospital and be able to factor in some of the traffic patterns that have changed as a result of the bridge renovation.
Okay. And then one last question, and this, again, is for the city manager, I think. You mentioned on the ERR that potentially, and you weren't definitive about it in any way, but that potentially you could see asking for $100,000 less there. Is that tied to any specific equipment, or just that's when you look at what's out there?
Let's see if I can find, go back to where it is. Basically, this is scrubbing the numbers and looking over the next 10 years, and looking at the out-years about the kind of equipment that we have on the books. One of the things that we did two years ago, two to three years ago, at the suggestion of Councilmember Mail, was to go through and really scrub each item that was in the ERR. And we took out some duplicate items, because we had been kind of paying for the same police car several times over the course of a 30-year period. So we've taken out that duplicate kind of count. We looked really carefully at those, at those various numbers, and we've been able to reduce the amount of money that we've put towards the ERR while keeping us a sound reserve for equipment replacement. When I was going through, because we had some purchases kind of out of order, which is what happens, to me, I felt comfortable going to the $700,000 mark as opposed to an $800,000 mark. The $800,000 mark was before some of the calculations were done in that spreadsheet, and so it was an estimate at that time. I feel comfortable going down some.
But at the moment, 800 is what's in the proposed budget.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Simmons?
I just wanted to follow up on the equipment replacement reserve.
Yes.
And give a little historical perspective.
Yes.
That was an area that, when I first joined the council, that city manager was kind of using as a way to balance budgets.
Yeah, I know.
And it was not, it wasn't well-planned out for the impact in the long run for when the equipment was needed. And so there was periodically scramble for money to try to purchase equipment. And I was pleased to see that the council, through the years, was able to come up with the current approach to doing the equipment replacement reserve.
Right.
And it has been running, I think, fairly smoothly now in the past few years.
Yes.
That when we need equipment that was foreseeable for many years, that we had actually saved the money and have it in the reserve so that we could purchase it without adverse hardship on the council to come up with the money when there are other things that really, you know, the community wants to do. It's a way of making it a much smoother process, and I appreciate where we are.
Right. I remember the first time, as an acting manager, having to come up with the number, I had to come up with $1.3 million contribution. That's how, because we had not paid into it at the right amount for a number of years. And so, I mean, that starts to be just a huge hit. One of the reasons that I'm also talking about the numbers going down a little bit is to what Captain Bowers just talked about, which is the impact of the vehicle replacement team, review team, going through and changing, really looking at each type of vehicle, how many, what the real replacement number of years should be. And some of the things were changed, like from six to eight years, that kind of thing, where we could. And so that helped adjust the, those items in the ERR as well. And so that's changed the numbers a little bit. It's, I think, a more accurate number, and it's a very responsible number.
And if I could just put on my paternal hat for a moment, I would say it's a much more responsible way of doing business, and lets us build towards the future when we know we're going to have to get there.
That's right. I appreciate that very much.
Councilmember Schultz?
Looking at the actual spreadsheet here on page 164, there's something, all of the capital expenditures are arrayed on those two pages that are proposed, excuse me, well, I was wrong about that, a couple more pages. But in the first column, after the item is identified, there's something called priority.
Right.
I'm trying to figure out why we have that list.
Well, and actually, I'm not going to stand behind the numbers in this, because I saw a couple of things that I disagree with. But what we tried this year was to have each department, when they identified their item, also go through a listing, and I think the code is on the last page of the CIP.
Yeah.
Number one is imperative.
Right.
Generally, that is, it's tied to a grant match or some other kind of court order or...
I just said mandate.
Yeah, mandate. Yeah, mandate, essential, important, or desirable. And so I think some of the numbers could be adjusted a little bit. I did not focus on that when it got printed, but I think that it's a good thing for us to do going forward, to really identify if there's something that is just desirable that we would like versus we really have to do it. The, you know, partly the priority also can mean, when do we need to do it? And so there's lots of movement in the preparation of the CIP every year about which year should something take place. And we look, it's a five-year budget. You know, we go through and identify, in this past year, I know that the recreation bus got pushed back for replacement, because that can last longer. So, you know, we look at these things and identify when is really the appropriate year for a purchase.
Well, the reason I'm trying to get some clarity is because I found it confusing. I mean, the police cars are given a priority, number one.
Right, and I disagree with that.
So, obviously, that's something we have to spend this fiscal year.
I will say, I will say that that's how it should mean, should mean, I'm just...
But if you go over to the recreation page, the next facing page, pool table and scoreboard, I mean, skip the order of the dollars, that's a priority four, and we're funding those two things in FY '18, too. It would seem to me that we'd be putting those off till about FY '22, because they have no priority whatsoever, according to this, and so...
At this point, I ask you not to pay attention to the priority listing.
That's what I was hoping you might say.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's just something that I need to pay attention to, and I did not in preparing this document.
I'm, okay. I guess my concern, and I've already kind of expressed this to you and Susan, is the amount of our bonding between FY '18 and FY '25.
Yep.
Because I went back and looked through all the CAFERS that would, not all of them, it sounds like a big stack of them, but a couple of them that would take me back to 2003, and was looking on a per capita bonded debt.
Right.
The numbers. And right now, we, given what the last, since 2003, that's what, 15, 16 fiscal years, we're at the lowest level of bonding, bonded debt per capita.
That's right.
That we've been in all that time. So you'd say, well, this is, if we have to borrow a lot...
This is the time for that.
This is the time to do it. And the problem is, is that we're borrowing, we're going to be borrowing a whole lot. And that's sort of, and you were alluding to this, and I think, I want to make sure that we're clear on this, because I think we, I want us to make sure we know what we're getting ourselves into here. I mean, the transportation bonding is kind of like imperative. We don't have any choice about it.
That's right. That's a grant match, federal grant match that we committed to.
We have to do that, or else they'll put us in front of a firing squad, I guess.
We'll have to pay it out of cash.
Yeah. But basically, what I understood from my conversations emails is that during that eight-year period from '18 to '25, our bonding capacity is kind of going to be topped out.
For what we're comfortable with? It doesn't, it still doesn't meet the recommended kind of cast of things.
No, I appreciate that. You know, we're still going to be well below our 1% of assessed value, but we've apparently never come this, or at least in a very long time.
Been a while. I mean, when we did, when we did the original community center bond, it was pretty high. We had some other bonds at that time as well.
Yeah, 19, in 2003 and 2004. The concern is, is that, my concern is, is that for that number of years, if we really need to do some serious bonding, we're just not, it's going to be really difficult for us to, for the future city councils. And we've been, in fact, making a decision this year to paint into a corner our future city councils, who are going to be somewhat hamstrung for borrowing. I'm not saying I have the solution, but I just think we need to be careful, be aware that to the, to whatever degree we can reduce our payments, and you've said, well, by extending it to 30 years, that's one way of doing it.
That's right.
But that actually doesn't make that big of a difference in the first few years. It makes some, and we probably need to do a 30-year bond on the library. I just hope that we can figure out a way to chisel away at other budget items so that maybe we can reduce our amount of our bond if we can find more money to help us pay from elsewhere for the library.
I'm trying to do the best that we can, given the various options. It's part of the reason that I didn't take the tax rate down very much. It's part of the reason that, you know, that I choose, that I chose kind of where I felt comfortable as a cap amount of a bond, of a bond service amount. So when we're getting in the $900,000 range, it's still well within what we can afford, I just don't want to go more than that. And when you hit the million-dollar mark, it just sounds high compared to those various options. The thing that really hits us really is these first three years, because those are the time when we're still paying off also the PW bond. Once the Public Works bond is paid off, the number drops down. And it is, in fact, the FY '19 and FY '20 years that I'm nervous about the revenue stream. And so we have to do some risk evaluation, and, you know, the finance director and I sat down and played with these various options and tried different...
I can tell from all the charts that you guys were really playing.
We really wanted to make sure that we could get this so that it made sense, but it's also, it is going to bring us, I think, part of our infrastructure as a library that will be essential to our community. And I, you know, it's just recognizing that we've got about three years that we have to be very careful with our funds.
Yeah, I want to be clear that I have no hesitation with regard to doing the bonding that we need to do. I just wish the numbers weren't quite so big.
Yeah, I know.
And I was thinking maybe of making a contribution.
Yeah, well, if somebody, I mean, if somebody knows someone rich, I'm happy to not borrow $7 million bucks. We could try six.
How about selling the naming rights to the library?
I just...
We'll let you go there.
I'm sure that SunTrust would jump in.
I just, Councilmember Schultz wanted to ask, it sounds like what you're saying is that, okay, if we, when we, if we choose to bond the library, are we sure that we're not going to have another big project in the next five or six years?
That's exactly, that's exactly.
Such as New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center?
Exactly.
Or some other project? Are we sure that that is the priority?
Well, it just means that we have to cross our fingers a little bit, but here we are looking for a partner with regard to the recreation.
That's right. We're looking for other sources of funds for some of this work.
And so that's going to make it possible for us to do a rec center, but it isn't going to come, our partnership isn't going to be like, oh, well, you get to spend all the money and the city just sits and watches. We're going to be putting in matching money there, and who knows where that money's going to come from? If it's going to come from a bond or where?
I just want to add the capital planning that has gone into particularly the library renovation and expansion, and the number of years that we have spent planning for this project. So, while I agree that we should take seriously the amount that we're going to borrow in the city, the idea that five years from, that we're tying another city council's hands five years from now, or over the next five years, the chance that we have another large, major project that we would undertake or have the capacity to undertake in that time, I would question that. If we have the Ethan Allen project, the Flower Avenue project, and a library renovation while we're also doing the redevelopment of Tacoma Junction, I think we have tapped out our city staff as well as our council's capacity. And I would be not only leery to take on another large project because of other borrowing, but just because of thinking about how well we could do that. That doesn't mean we don't plan for New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center or something else. We always have to be looking forward and planning, but I think legitimately thinking about what we may take on that we'd have to borrow, that we're looking five, seven years down the road, that makes sense.
I think, I think as long as Councilmember Schultz says, it's concerned, though, that, I think the Nancy and Frederick Schultz Library might be a strong consideration.
Oh, well.
A story nook.
In that case, the only thing I can think of is the rec center, so that we're not sort of saying, well, we're all ready to go, but we're going to have to wait two and a half years. I'm just, or the police...
The police department, I think, has work that needs to be done.
The atrium and all that, and that could cost us a million bucks.
Right, and I think that, you know, one of the things that we're looking at, I'm certainly looking at, and you'll see in this, in this schedule, is also doing some of the facility improvements over the course of time so that we don't have large amounts we have to do at a time. You know, what we can do that make the improvements, that make it a little better in some cases for working conditions, you know, we're trying to do that without making it a huge project. And so that's, that's part of the balancing. What can we, what can we pay out of cash that's a smaller amount? And then, as you said, Mayor, you know, for these projects that have been planned for quite some time and are major projects, bonding is appropriate.
May I ask a question, different subject now?
Sure.
But you mentioned doing some Maple Avenue streetscaping, and then you said if, I don't remember the exact wording here.
Let's see, let me get back to that. There was...
Tentative projects there.
Right, so, I'm not sure.
Go back to the one you were just on.
Yeah, right there. For the new sidewalk design, construction, traffic coming. Is this some, I think, I'm assuming that this is something that we have, have to go through a voting procedure with the residents on for Maple Avenue?
Yeah, so, all of the...
Ian, you want to introduce yourself?
Hello, my name's Ian Chamberlain, I'm the construction manager. So, all of our streetscape improvements, all of our new sidewalk construction, all of that is voted on by the immediate community. So if there is going to be any roadway changes to Maple Avenue, that would go through meetings with the community.
Go through what?
Meetings with the community.
Okay.
And so this would be the first stage in that.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz, have you done, or?
Well, I have some other questions, but I didn't want to, you know...
Councilmember Seaman's jumped in.
No, 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 that's fine. I wanted to let all of us to kind of have a shot. By the way, are either of our, either of these guys on the phone?
No, neither are on the phone. Councilmember Koreshi texted me, and he said he had a late-breaking emergency at work, and he sends his apologies.
Okay, well, if I may, in the budget, there's a, in Public Works, a recycling truck for two, just almost $250,000. And whereas a regular trash truck, which I guess we familiarly think of as a garbage truck, is about, is the same price, and I'm just sort of wondering, why is this, why is recycling truck so expensive? Because I know right now, I think we're using a flatbed truck to collect food waste.
Well, yeah, that's a very different kind of truck.
Yeah, so...
Do you want to talk about the truck?
I'm sure you've got a clear explanation, I just want, I'm curious as to, about that and a couple other items.
Yeah, I may have to look into the price differential between the recycling truck and the trash truck a little bit farther, but specifically, whenever you get more technical with a piece of equipment, there's always an increase in cost. So, a truck that can handle refuse, you can throw anything into the truck, and it's going to put it out whenever you ask the truck to put it on the ground. A recycling truck, maybe it has to do with flyaway trash, maybe it has to do with how it's compacted.
It often has, also has the arm to lift up the recycling bins for certain things.
Yeah, okay.
We can look into that further if you'd like.
But what we do is, is we do take the price, the last time we bought a recycling truck, and extrapolate it out by the number of years.
The next, the MML meeting this June, I want to go down in the exhibit hall and say, I want to see a recycling truck, because they have them all there.
Sure.
Next question is, what is a leaf box?
That's a terribly complicated piece of machinery. It's actually a steel insert that slides into the back of either the dump trucks or the 450 dump body pickup trucks. It has an open top that they put a canvas covering on, and it receives the leaf vacuum exhaust, basically. So, as they vacuum the leaves off the street, it goes into a large container, which is typically several sizes larger than the volume on most of those dump vehicles.
Oh, I see.
Because the leaves don't weigh as much as most of the materials they carry.
They're big ugly boxes that they stack up next to apartment buildings, or which you have maybe on the system.
Okay, good, okay.
They're yellow.
We've got, oh, let's see, I'll just keep, leave that one out. This doesn't concern the Department of Public Works, more in the Communications Department. An auditory and PA system, that's for this space?
Right.
What is it that we don't have here today that we need a public address system?
Parts of our PA system are beyond their useful life. So we've got new mics now, but they're coming through old speakers that have been in need of updating for some time now.
And all of that comes out of the Cable Capital Grant.
Yeah, and we have a big pot of money to use for that.
Okay. I'll pause here while I think about some more questions.
Councilmember Koresh?
Yeah, I just had a couple of others, thank you. One other thing I forgot to ask on the library bond bill, so you mentioned, you know, the modest amount that we get from the state, and whether it's the library or some other bond, can you go back? Let's say the bond that we're talking about is approved in the way that you presented it, and so we're begin paying that. Obviously, it would be nice in a given year to have some extra money that could be used to defray that. Do they, can you get a bond bill through the state for a bond that's already been issued? And just say, in that year, we'll apply $150,000 to that, or does that not really exist?
No, it's, you know, it's the confusing nature of the term bond.
Right.
A bond bill is a grant from the state. And it's, we have to use it for construction. We have to use it for the project for which it's been identified, and we can't just use it as cash to help pay our debt service, for example, for borrowing money. It may free up cash in our general fund that we can use.
So once the project was completed, say, it's a year of design, a year of construction, at that point, when all you're doing is the debt service, you can no longer tap into that money in that way, is that...
That's right, we would just use it, we would contribute the $150,000 as part of a construction cost, and we have to show that we're matching it, which we are more than matching it, and that's it.
But once construction is completed, then...
It can only, it can go for construction expenses. So if we still have some construction expenses to pay, we can pay it. Sometimes we can offset it, but, you know, you try to take care of that money pretty quickly, so it doesn't just sit around, because sometimes the state legislature will change its mind. What we would like to do is actually go back to the state legislature and have more in a subsequent year, so that we have more than $150,000.
Yeah, okay. And then just changing the topic a little bit, so on the ADA sidewalk compliance, which we talked about a little bit, and I know that you mentioned the state highway piece of that as well, can you talk a little bit more about how that would work and the part we have to get them to approve, even though we're spending the money, et cetera?
Sure. One of the very annoying things about state highway is that state highway right-of-way usually includes sidewalks, or it should include sidewalks. If there, if there are sidewalks that state highway has put in, and they're not meeting ADA standards, maybe they never, maybe the standards have been changed, or maybe tree roots have changed and got things out of whack, they expect the local jurisdictions to do the work on the sidewalks. The problem is that... The problem is that they don't just let it, they don't just say, okay, you're responsible for maintaining the sidewalks. They want to approve the plans first before we do it. And we know how to, we know how to repair a sidewalk. Nevertheless, we have to go through the state permitting process to get the approval to repair the sidewalks. What we would like to do is to get general standards approved that say, we tell them this stretch, and we're using the general standards, and then we can just go and do it. And that's what, that's what we're going to be working towards. It's what we do with some other utility type places where we, we follow the standards. So we're, we're hoping that we can just get those general standards approved. We actually use those standards on our city streets, so it's not like it has to be a different standard for our employees.
Is that more of a time-saving than a money-saving thing, or is it both to some extent?
You know, it's, it certainly can be, take a lot of time to go through that process, but you have to have, you know, stamped engineered drawings to send to them.
Yeah, so you have to-
And that's ridiculous. You know, this is sidewalk repair.
But that would be a cost too, then?
That would be a cost, yeah.
And so I thought it was 200,000, I might have the wrong number, but do we know now for the coming fiscal year if that money was approved, you know, where in the city it would be done, or is that still to be determined?
We have not, and that's part of, there's a couple locations, we're probably going to put a little team together because we'll want to compare the walking routes to schools and some of the, some of the kind of ADA demand routes, areas where we feel that there's the highest priority, but that, that list hasn't been approved yet.
And the last thing, is there, using your standard, standards that you hope will be what is followed, is there a cost, you know, per foot or 10 feet or however you calculate it on average for that?
I don't have it, we'll find out.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Getting back to the police department, we have the 50,000 that comes from the speed camera for the police office renovation, and the 140,000 that comes from the general fund, correct? So if we don't spend that 140,000, how does that change anything?
The 140,000 is detailed design for the concept design that's been prepared to renovate the police department. It could be put off. The, the police department badly needs some improvement, so that's why we've identified at least 50,000 to do some kind of minor habitable improvements in that area. I would like to be able to move forward with the detailed design so that as funds are available, we're able to take advantage of them. This is one of the few places where I'm still somewhat hopeful for grant funding. Once you, you know, sometimes there's Department of Justice monies, this is a great place to spend, to, that we might be able to, to use as opposed to city monies. But you need to have a design approved so that you can really get grant money.
So if we just spend the 50,000, what percentage of the design would that give us?
That doesn't do any of the design. That's, that's just for kind of basic renovations, like in bathrooms and stuff that needs to be done.
Okay. And then on your, this is page 23, on the street rehab, 300,000, you have Winding Hill Way.
Right.
When are you going to have a firm idea if Winding Hill Way will see any improvements in the upcoming fiscal year?
Well, it's on our list, so that's a good, that's a, that's a good start. Because there's some of these other changes on Winding Hill Way, it may make sense to, to combine, you know, to combine some of that. But I'll have to find out what, if there's something that we might be waiting for. I don't know.
And has Ms. Braithwaite confirmed that we can put a sidewalk on Winding Hill Way, or?
I don't, do you know anything about this, a concept of a side, you meant, you want a speed hump or a sidewalk?
Both. Well, the speed-
There's not, I'm sure there's not room for a sidewalk.
The speed hump was part of the deal.
Right, I know.
But is there, because resident, a resident did ask for a sidewalk. So I want to know, technically, can you put one on Winding Hill Way?
I would have to research it further, but if I needed to give you an answer right now, I don't believe we have the right-of-way to provide both an alleyway and a sidewalk, nor do I think you'll find anywhere else in the city that has a sidewalk in an alley.
I think the question is exactly where it's placed. And, you know, the actual dimensions of the, of the city's right-of-way really varies, and then it narrows a lot at the, at the turn close to Piney Ranch.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I have a hypothetical here, just to help me understand something. We have the, on the slide 19, you said that there's, at the end of this fiscal year, the ERR will have a expected balance of about $3.6 million.
That's right.
And then on slide 21, you say, well, we average about $655,000-
Over a 10-year period.
-per annum that we spend it. So in other words, hypothetically speaking, if we did not put another dollar from this day forward into the ERR, that balance would run us, carry us out.
Five years.
Five and a half years. I did, I did the arithmetic. And-
And then, and then Councilmember Simmons can yell at you.
Yeah. Well, by that time, I won't be on the city council.
Okay.
I'll probably be living in, yeah, yeah, Florida, thank you. Good long ways away. It just seems to me that, you know, it wouldn't take much to sneak some money out of the equipment reserve. Just, just, I said hypothetical, at this point in time, in order to keep, again, I'm saying this all in a hypothetical way, in order to keep our bonding requirements a little less than they might otherwise have to be.
Yeah, Councilmember Schultz, I'll tell you, the, the biggest issue for me-
And I'm sure you've thought of that.
I would love to do something else with money, sure, but the thing that I'm most concerned about, I mean, one of the things about having a reserve is that sometimes the council can decide to do something different with it. And if our, if our inter-jurisdictional revenue drops precipitously in FY '19 and FY '20-
Right.
We may need every dollar of that. And so what, what I, what I would prefer not to do is to, I'd prefer not to make the decision about bonding with the funds. I'd prefer to have that in a reserve that has more flexibility if we need it.
No, I, I understand.
Yeah, but you, you ask a good, I mean, it's always good to probe these. I think it's, you know, until you try every option, you don't kind of decide what you need to know.
Well, I think all of us would say our reserves are there, including me, for a reason.
Yeah.
That's why they're called reserves. Like we need to have a reserve when we create the bond, so that the bondholders know we're capable of paying it off.
That's right.
That's a legal requirement. But nevertheless, if, if, if a difficult day comes, I mean, who knows, you know, with this crazy administration, that's, that's, that's there. But it's good for you to defend it out loud so that everybody here and out there in television land understands.
No, the other thing, we were very fortunate this past winter not having a major storm that was very costly. You know, we've not had a tornado tear off our roof or do these various things. I mean, sometimes insurance can cover things, but other times, it just costs us money. And so it's why we just can't be right at the line.
So looking, does anyone else have any other comments regarding the capital projects or the bonding? And I'd like to remind my colleagues that as we're going through this process, I will, oh, we're just kind of wrapping up, actually. We would, we'll keep a running list of, on the reconciliation items. So far, we'll add the-
Hundred thousand.
The $100,000 from the ERR to that. Is there anything else this evening that somebody would like to put on the reconciliation list for us to consider as we start to create that? I'm just going to put a placeholder for the FMR to come back to that.
Okay. The other thing, I just, if I, it's not really the, the night for it, but we did talk a lot about stormwater. One of the things that I just want to mention is that the jump from $55 to $92, you know, is a substantial, certainly a visual jump. There's, the finance director and I have been looking at what we might be able to do related to that, not for this coming year, but in the next year and from then on, we will be able to have that on people's property tax bills. So it doesn't, it's not something that somebody has to pay out of pocket in a separate payment. The other thing is that we are happy to put a statement on the invoice that goes out to residents, that if someone has difficulty paying that increased amount, we can do it in a couple payments and that kind of thing. So we're happy to try to work with people, recognizing that it is a big jump and it might not be something that they're expecting. I just wanted to, to say that we've been exploring options other than putting it just on the tax, regular, being paid out of general taxes.
Councilmember Kovar?
The explanation was fine, but the 150 for the potential improvements, I just would like, I'm not saying we should not have that, I'd like to have that on the list of things we're taking a closer look at as we go forward.
All right, so the neighborhood commercial-
Neighborhood commercial, right. So what, one of the things in, as we go through the programs next week on council priorities, there's other funds also that have economic development implications. So we're kind of, you know, thinking of them perhaps as a lump sum in different ways, but we're identifying where we thought there might be capital versus operating. Those things may change.
And it may be fine, it's just that that struck me as a new thing that hadn't really occurred to me.
That's right. And so that may be one of those things that there's a more flexible pot of money of those funds, you know, as we find the recommendations from the, from the consultants.
Go ahead, Councilmember Schultz.
The 140,000 for the police space design and the reconciliation.
He said the 140,000 for the detailed design for the police space.
Okay.
I'm sorry, do we have this? Do we have the stormwater? Has anyone proposed a different number for the stormwater?
Not yet.
Increase, yeah. So I would propose that at whatever-
Actually, before you do that, Councilmember, I would just suggest that you may want to listen to the city manager's presentation this evening, and she just handed out, and you can put it on, but this sheet, that is new information for us. And so we have time to add to our reconciliation list, so I don't know if you want to consider that.
Just in the balance between you, between wanting a list with items on it and waiting-
Right, no, well, I-
Sure, I'm happy to.
You know, it's, we did have a presentation tonight and we discussed it, so you can put it forward, but I thought you might want the benefit of the information that the rest of us have before you did that.
Absolutely, that's fine.
But you can do whatever you want.
I'm happy to wait.
Great. All right, anything else?
Just, this is not a reconciliation. The neighborhood commercial center improvements that-
Right.
150,000, these are just sort of hung out there on a hook.
Right.
To me, it's a little bit like setting aside, you know, the money we set aside for our housing reserve, and we did that for all that. But in a way, if we're going to do economic development, at some point, maybe not FY ' '18, but at some point, we're going to need some, some money to be able to do economic development to leverage things.
That's right.
Just, just as the same way we want to use the housing reserve to leverage a lot more money than is in that reserve. Hopefully, to get some money from our friends in Montgomery County, for example-
Right.
-for the housing reserve. Who knows where, you know?
The recommittee just added our medic to the budget, so hopefully that'll keep moving forward.
So that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Cool. Anything else this evening?
Thanks very much.
And we'll be back on Wednesday.
Thank you.